Meeting order, you can.
Good evening, everyone. Is anyone else having audio problems?
I guess we can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Hey, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hey, Robert, I'm unable to bring up, for some reason, I'm unable to bring up my agenda. The file is just not, oh, thank you so much.
Let me see here, I just need to scroll it a little bit. Okay, so roll. Uh, Vice Chair Collins. Think you're muted.
Here.
Uh, Christine David. Uh, Joe Davis is not here. Jerome is here and Tom was, I think he said he was rejoining. Tom, are you on?
I'm here, still having audio problems, so.
We can hear you loud and clear, Tom.
Okay, great. I may, I, I'm getting a weird reverb feedback from the other end, so I may just dial in. See if that helps.
So, uh, do we have any member of the public, uh, do we have any public comments?
I didn't receive any chief. Did you receive any public comments?
No, I did not.
Moving on to approval of the minutes, uh, the previous meeting, uh, since I wasn't there. I'm not sure. Carol?
Uh, I am fine with the minutes as written and would, um. Suppose they're accepted as written.
So we, if you propose, I can second.
Okay. Uh, we could do a, a roll call, I know Jerome, you're gonna abstain from it because you're not, you weren't here. Uh, Tom?
I think I heard my name.
Do you vote the affirmative on approval of the minutes?
Give me one second, I'll dial in here.
Okay, I'll jump to Christine.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know if I could vote on this.
Okay, so I think we're gonna have to put, if we don't have, uh, enough people to vote on it, I think we're gonna have to push it off.
Oh, if I, if I could interject, um, yes, um, I think it's perfectly acceptable for you to vote in the affirmative or negative if you find that you, you are not comfortable with the, um, minutes. Uh, if you've read the minutes and they seem reasonable to you, even though you weren't at the, uh, previous meeting, uh, it's perfectly okay for you to, uh, vote to, uh, accept the reading of the minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'm, uh, I can vote to second it.
Yes, thank you, Sean. Christine? Good, okay, thank you.
Carol? Yeah, you did, okay, great. So I think that's everybody.
So, since we do not have any old business, uh, moving on to speed feedback signs.
Yeah, so I will introduce it. We do have a member of the B-PAC, um, here with us tonight to, uh, provide a little more background as to the discussion that the, uh, B-PAC had, um, on the couple of items on today's agenda. So on the speed feedback signs, um, as is typical, the B-PAC committee takes a look at our, uh, bicycle pedestrian, uh, facilities and, uh, occasionally makes recommendations with regards to the installation of new speed feedback signs. We do get a limited budget every year, or have been getting a limited budget every year to help facilitate the installations. Um, we have, as you know, um, a host of signs that we will be putting in this fiscal year and the review and approval of these things will, um, help us in, um, proposing installations related to the upcoming capital budget. So, uh, what we have are recommendations to install signs on Fair Oaks Lane, Oak Grove near Madrone and on Selby. Um, and so with that, um, I'll introduce, um, Steve Bail from the B-PAC and you can speak to it a little more.
Um, yeah, hello, everyone. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for inviting me. Um, I'm relatively new to B-PAC this year, but, uh, I can give you a little bit of the history. We did go through an analysis of the traffic incidents over the last, uh, period of time, looked at the existing infrastructure, where are the current existing signs, and then prioritize them. This is the result of, uh, a couple of those deliberations. I'm, I can try to answer questions if you have specifics, but, um, this, I think, kind of lays it out pretty clearly, and we also tried to live within, um, sort of budgetary constraints as we understand them.
Are these temporary, uh, and portable feedback signs or permanent?
That's not the intent. It's, I think the idea is to put in permanent signs that have, um, you know, that tell people what their current speed is and hopefully also indicate the, uh, the, uh, speed limit. The two together seem to be most effective. So, uh, they do need to be placed in, um, situations where there's some, um, overhead light, um, sunlight. But you've, you know, I'm sure you've seen these around, around the neighborhood. So this would be more of, the more modern ones, um, which I guess are a little more expensive, allow us to record the, the history of, uh, people's speed, which I could be quite useful from traffic enforcement point of view. And so what we did not do is, uh, really intend to replace in the existing ones. Rather, we're filling in what we think are some of the hotspots, but they don't have good coverage currently. But we would also be using the more modern signs with this, a storage capability.
And so, Jerome, it'd be similar to the signs that are up now on Watkins.
Right. Or even on James.
Uh, James, uh, the ones that, uh, yeah, the one, I know the one on Watkins has, has the ca- capacities that, um, Steve was talking about. I don't recall the one on, on James if it's the same, but it will have the, uh, it's similar to what we talked about last meeting on, while you weren't there, on Glenwood. And so it would have a speed limit sign, it would have the feedback sign that, you know, indicates the speed. It would, uh, start flashing as people exceeded, exceed the speed limit and then, uh, after a certain number of miles an hour over the speed limit, uh, start flashing, slow down.
I'm curious, is the data that's collected just the speed limits of individuals passing by? And it's, it's, it's like a data point?
Yeah, it, it collects, uh, it should be collecting the time and date and speed of vehicles.
But not the, not the, uh, license plates?
No, it's just, it just detects something, something going by and annotates the speed.
Are the residents, uh, the, in the neighborhood, are they okay with this? Has there been a, um, uh, citizens outreach done?
Not as of yet. This is just the initial recommendation as to locations to potentially place these things. And typically what we would do is, once we identify locations, we would start, um, before we install, reach out to the fronting property owners of where we propose to place them, to make sure that there's, uh, not a, a significant objection, and we can typically make adjustments, but the placement typically will rely, as, uh, Steve indicated, um, on making sure that there's enough sunlight for the solar panel that, uh, that provides the power for it.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I, I believe that this is kind of the first step, uh, Transportation Committee members, um, uh, recommend, uh, this action, uh, based on the recommendations of, I guess, the B-PAC. And then it moves on up to City Council for, uh, final deliberation and approval. And at that point, then the, uh, public outreach is, is done. Is that correct, Robert?
That's correct.
Can I ask, wasn't, um, public outreach somewhat done with that NTMAP, all that?
Yes, but these locations are different than what was, uh, what were recommended in the, in the other plan. And so I think these are additional signs that are being requested.
So how, sorry, uh, Carol, you're done? Yeah, okay. So, eh, how important is the public response? If, uh, they're against it, then would this plan still go forward? Eh, assuming, uh, Transportation Committee approve, um, recommends it and City Council approves it?
Well, if there's an objection from the property that we outreach to in terms of placement, we would either try, we'd probably try and come up with a couple of potential locations to place the signs before conversing with the property owners. And really, it's only the property owner that the sign is in that fronted strip that, that we do much outreach with because we're doing work along the fronted strip in front of their property. So we want to make sure that if there's any significant concerns that we address them. But as with other safety improvements, we do have the right to place things within the public right of way. But we do want to make sure that we are coordinating with the property owner. And if moving it a couple of feet this way or that way ma- makes a difference to them, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. If no one has any.
You wanna say something? I think you're on mute. You're on mute?
Sorry, who's on mute?
Tom.
Tom.
I'm sorry, Tom, we didn't get that. You're on mute.
There you are.
Yeah, I, okay, I guess this works. So I, I dialed it on the phone, which is not on mute. But anyway, the, um, there's no personally identifiable data that's collected by these boxes, but they will do the same or similar job as the current black boxes today in terms of keeping track of the high and low and all that.
Uh, for the most part, the distinction really is the black box is something that's not really seen by motorists. Um, whereas this, obviously, there may be a little bit of impact. Hopefully with them seeing if they do slow down, so you'll have a slight distinction between what speeds you would collect with a black box versus this sign.
Gotcha. So there, there is a visual deterrent, obviously, but it's collecting the data that we can then trend back to when the black box was there as well as, you know, keeping track of trend data for speeds on, on that road at that location.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I think that'd be interesting to look at and see the effectiveness of these signs.
So, Robert, do we have any action for the committee on this? Any action item on this specific?
The, the action item would be, we wanted to recommend moving forward.
Got it. Uh, I'm in favor of moving forward because, uh, I guess the people who are impacted are the ones who are, um, who have already recommended this and they've done a fair amount of research. Um, I'd love to hear, uh, from the rest of, uh, my peers on this, uh, committee.
I guess I'd like to say, it seems like, I, I, we're supposed to join the two lists. Is that kind of what we're supposed to do? I mean, it seems like, uh, Selby Lane is on both.
Yeah, I think there, there are different stretches, and so I just provided that for informational, for, for your information that those were the next phase recommended in the NTMAP. But I think the budgets are going to be separated, so we are okay with the additional recommendation to bring forward to the, to the council's part of the budget process.
So, Robert, we're recommending all of these signs or just?
Just, uh, the first, the ones that came out of the B-PAC, the first four.
Okay. Seems very reasonable.
First three, I can see, yeah, okay, four, as in two radar signs plus the one each. Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So we can start off if there's a motion?
I will move that we, um, we recommend the four locations.
And I second it.
Okay, so I'll do a quick roll. Um, Carol?
Yes.
Uh, Christine?
I.
Tom?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
All right. If you want to move, uh, move on to the next item.
Very late, yeah.
Okay, I'm happy to give a brief introduction on this one. And then I will again turn it over to Steve and I'll bring up, uh, a couple of, uh, images that might help in the deliberation and discussion. Um, so at the last B-PAC meeting during their conversation on speed feedback signs, they were looking at the potential for putting one on Berry Lane. With the, the narrow roadway width, uh, there was a bit of a concern, um, particularly around the, uh, the tight curves near, um, Faxon, um, that as cars come down there to avoid pedestrians and cyclists, they occasionally veer into the oncoming lane. Um, and so there is a desire to consider some, uh, potential warning signage, uh, basically to advise motorists of the potential of, um, pedestrian and bicycle traffic on the roadway. And so with that, I will turn it over to Steve as I try and bring up a couple of images here.
So on this topic, um, it was helpful to get the perspective of Sergeant Metzger, who was attending the last meeting, because he's, he was able to comment on some of the hazards involved in this. I'm sure you guys have traveled over this. We're talking particularly around that stretch that goes over the creek where the road turns. And as you probably know, uh, it's, it's quite, it's circuitous, but there's also not much margin on either side. Um, I've had a lot of experience here. My wife and I walk our dogs there regularly and, um, we've witnessed, um, well, we've witnessed accidents in addition to near accidents. As Sergeant Metzger pointed out, um, this is still a 25 mile an hour zone. I mean, I, there's a broader discussion around whether that's the right speed limit, but knowing that changing speed limits is a difficult thing to do. We had a, a, a larger discussion on, well, what else could be done there to mitigate the significant risks that we see there regularly. And in particular, I would say it's, it's tending towards, I don't want to get too specific, but if you're, if you're going, um, s- southbound around school time, you know, this is one of the cut-throughs, this and Elena are the two cut-throughs to, uh, a lot of the schools on the other side. There's a, often a bright sun that hits you early in the morning going over that bridge. It's, um, it's a combination of factors, but I think you tend to see a lot of speeding, particularly in the, on the morning south commute side of things. Yeah, kind of going in that direction, I think. So, one of the suggestions that came out of our discussion was, well, what, what can be done? And, uh, someone had brought up the idea of putting in one of these warning flashing signs, which is sort of a, you know, uh, a, a kind of a, a more, a more intrusive, if you will, sign that, that would warn people about the upcoming curve, um, and, and remind them to slow down. Of all the suggestions on how to mitigate this risk, that was the one that seemed most palatable. I mean, speed bumps frankly would be probably the most effective, but I, I think a much more politically charged topic. Um, I'm guessing. And in any case, the, um, the, the, the sign was what we came to as, as maybe a first step to try to get people to slow down and be more cautious as to make that turn and not do it at 25 miles an hour, because it's, it's really not safe. So that's kind of the overview of it. And, you know, I, if, if any of you, um, haven't been down that road and we can, I can spend more time on that, but I imagine most of you have. Um, and in particular, you can see here on the map, it turns, but a- as it goes over the hump, I mean, over the creek, there is, uh, you know, a, a hill, and people, uh, have been known to take that quickly. I've witnessed people going fast enough that actually brought the, actually the car turned over on its side. We witnessed that a few years ago, a teenager going way too fast and flipped the car. So it's, it's a serious problem and more so, I would say, than even Elena, which does have speeders, um, cutting through. But there, it's a straight shot. Here, because of the curve, it adds, I think, another element of danger, which is, um, I think problematic. I'll stop there.
Let me try and see if I can get. So I think this is the general area that you were talking about. Is that correct?
Yeah, 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 um, it's, yeah, that's right. Um, before you get to the, yeah, that's right. There's the, you can see there, there's the, um, the creek where it narrows, it turns at the same time. And, uh, you know, people walk, there's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bicycle traffic there. So that's a pinch point. And, and then you get the trucks coming across there too with all the construction. So it's, it's ready for a serious problem. I mean, we're not, I mean, a fatality there would, would not surprise me, to be honest.
I think you got a lot of, sort of three major components with, um, I think that's a bike route, not the, not the designated one, but for most of the folks coming from west Selby, Paul Hammett, that whole area, you know, from Alameda West, that's going to be your first turn getting to Sacred Heart or even Menlo, right? Because you would. And then you turn left and head to Menlo.
That's exactly right. And that's why I think it gets heavy, uh, school time traffic in the morning. Well, both, both ways. But in the morning, people seem to be in a bigger hurry.
Yeah, well, and that's when the sun's going to be in your eyes. But the other thing is, you know, certainly in that May, June timeframe, there seem to be just a tremendous amount of new drivers. I just noticed from my being on the roads and walks and whatnot. Um, and all, sometimes my morning takes me up towards west Selby and, you know, you've got, um, newer drivers, faster cars, um, and this is, this road is, you know, I could see where it would become dangerous. And then the regular traffic combined with construction traffic, and that has always been a pinch point, because the hump, I'm not sure whether we're looking north or south on that, but there is a bit of a, of a hump there as well, right?
Yeah, absolutely. In that hump with the turn, we've seen people get airborne there.
Yeah, well, once that word gets out, I think there are going to be folks coming to try to do that.
Yeah, we could turn it into a skateboard park instead.
Yeah.
So I, I have a question. What, what would the sign say? Blind curve or slow down or what?
Robert, do you want to answer that? Or do you want me to try to?
Well, I can bring up a couple of images of, uh, some potential warning signs, um, for consideration. Um, and so things that can be considered would be something like narrow bridge. Um, you know, something about the curves or, um, you know, watch for pedestrians and cyclists.
I think Sergeant Metzger's suggestion initially was a flashing light. I mean, not something much more likely to get your attention, not a standard speed sign like these, but rather literally a flashing light that starts a slow warning, you know, dangerous cross, something to that effect. So something active, I think, was his, was his suggestion.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think of the type of beacons that are part of the, uh, MUTCD. There's a couple, um, and things that can be done, provided that there's enough, uh, sunlight. They actually, there isn't, uh, there are a couple of manufacturers that in essence, take a scan line and put the LED, um, lights in them. And so it'll be kind of flashing, but the concern's really going to be making sure that there's enough sunlight to power, to power it. Um, so that's one, uh, we do have on Alameda de Las Pulgas approaching Stockbridge, um, with, uh, I think it is the, um, the W2 dash one. Uh, this sign here that has, uh, a little flashing yellow light on top.
You know, one of the things for, for us, uh, to do enforcement, whi- which would be nice is, uh, it, it, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the S-turn on, on Atherton Avenue. When you go into the S-turn, there's a recommended speed of 20 miles an hour. And, you know, even though the speed limit through there is 25, on Berry, you know, cars going at 25, seem like they're, they're, they're flying through there. So if we could get, uh, you know, recommended speed, uh, for a portion of that roadway to be 20 miles an hour, then it gives us the ability to write a ticket at 30 miles per hour. If the rec, you know, if, if, if the speed limit is 25 for the majority of the street, but that area there, uh, if we, you know, a cautionary sign of 20, then we can issue a ticket for speeding at 30 miles an hour. Right now, it's going to be really tough for us to go into court and, you know, write a speeding ticket for somebody going, you know, 28, 29 miles an hour, you know, when the speed limit is toward 25.
I think that's an excellent point. And by the way, I could, could not agree more. And when people are doing, even at 25, it feels like they're rocketing through there.
Right.
Okay, well, that, that's something that we can look at is a combination of the curve and the speed, uh, speed warning sign that is suggested by Sergeant Metzger.
Yeah, hey, um, my question is, have we done enforcement? And I guess that's for you, Sergeant Metzger. What the enforcement's been like there, what we found?
You know, uh, myself and, and one of the other motorcycle officers will go out there and will, and will, and will be in the area and be seen. But again, it's going to be really difficult for us to, to make a, a traffic stop for somebody that, again, is, you know, only, you know, you know, four or five miles an hour above the posted speed limit. It's, it's, uh, it's difficult for us to, you know, justify a stop for that. But if we can get, you know, even though the speed limit is 25, if we can get a recommended speed of 20 miles an hour, then if we stop somebody for close to 30, you're, or 30, then at least we're stopping them for 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. And it may not even be, eh, you know, the type of thing where we're going to go out and write a budget ticket, but at least we can make some stops, slack some people over, give some warning citations, and at least be seen actually doing enforcement in the area.
Well, that, I mean.
Yeah, and I, word gets out that, I mean, especially amongst the younger drivers, right, then word gets out that the cops are hanging out there. And, and that has the desired effect. I, I like some of the signs, but, and, and I, I don't believe that that behavior is based on lack of knowledge across the people that I think are probably doing most of the speeding through there. Um, but I think enforcement, and I agree with you, um, that having a sign that, that, you know, that make the temporary speed limit such that you can take action against it is, uh, is a good idea.
A combination would be very effective and, and the advantage of, if you could get a 20 mile an hour speed limit, you wouldn't have to worry so much about, the, the signs wouldn't be as important. I think it's going to be easy to find a, a place where there's sunlight on the southbound direction. The northbound, if it's closer to that, the Faxon curve, it is very shaded. So I'm not sure there would be a spot there to put a sign if, if we were thinking of doing in both directions. But, but yeah, I love the idea of a 20 mile an hour, uh, and combination with the sign. I think that would be quite effective.
Right. A black, a black and yellow 25 mile, 20 mile an hour cautionary sign. Because at least, you, you know, we could stop somebody and if they're going 30 miles an hour, they're going to say, well, there's, you know, the speed limit is 25, I'm only five over. But if we could say, hey, there's a sign that said, you know, that you should really be going 20 miles an hour through this section in Europe, but Europe runs at 30, so.
Yeah, that we're seeing on the screen, right?
Right. This is on Atherton Avenue.
Right.
So, Steve, uh, you know, I'm sure you and B-PAC have really discussed this and, you know, checked out all angles and I don't think there's much we can come up with, but the, is there any way practically possible to introduce some sort of a stop sign there? I know it's not an intersection, but.
Well, you're asking, I, I would, I would ask, I mean, the people have been in this committee, um, or, or Sergeant Metzger, they, they probably know better. To me, that's a much more likely to be a, a, a big fight with the, with the locals. I think people really resist putting. To me, that's a much more likely to be a, a, a big fight with the, with the locals. I think people really resist putting a stop sign on their street.
I agree. I mean, actually bumps, speed bumps are worse than stop signs, but well, I guess that's what I was saying. You guys have probably discussed this uh, at great length, and I don't think there'd be probably any new ideas that we could come up with out of that.
Well, I mean, I think this is actually beyond our purview, you know, to be honest. I think it's more Transportation Committee topic, to be candid. I mean, um, maybe it affects us a little, you know, the BPAC, but we did not spend a lot of time on this, to be candid. I think we sort of assumed that it, the, the political will was going to be, it would be tough to put a stop sign in. Um, but you know, I would defer to you guys. You have more history here than I do.
No, I agree with you, Steve. Uh, that's definitely a bigger challenge. But maybe we could potentially, I mean, since this is probably not going to cost much, um, Sergeant Metzger's idea of uh, you know, the warning sign of the 20 miles per hour and then um, enforcement on top of that and maybe even um, I, I guess you must have already tried leaving the uh, cruiser there on random days and, you know, during the peak hours and stuff like that.
Well, I don't remember seeing the cruiser on Berry. Um, I've seen it over towards Sacred Heart on Elena and so forth, but, but yeah, I'm not sure how effective the cruiser, certainly not effective with the kids. They're pretty smart. Um,
The, the, the issue, the issue with leaving a car on, on Berry is that one, there's not a lot of areas to even park it. And then once you do find area for the builder to park it, now you've got the pedestrians walking on the roadway.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's a bit of a hazard. I can tell you one thing we did talk about was the, the problem, the, the feasibility of speed bumps. That was discussed in a couple of meetings ago and a long discussion around, you know, how does Menlo Park do it? And there's, you know, you have, obviously you have to care for the emergency vehicles and this and that. And we talked about it and I don't know that we, we made any progress and whether we thought that was even a feasible option. So this was, I think, kind of the first step to try to rectify the situation, probably a lot more palatable. Um, not as good, obviously, as speed bumps and probably not as good as a, as a stop sign either.
Right, so we could potentially, yeah. Uh, so a, as far as I'm concerned, I would love to um, propose that we recommend the um, 20 miles per hour warning sign um, added with um, but just with the enforcement. Um, and I'd like my committee members to uh, second it or.
I'd be happy to second it. I think it's very reasonable to have anybody slow down at a curve to 20 miles an hour, I think is a great idea. And I'm assuming that a lot of the people that we want to influence are more so high school students. And um, they, they're pretty good at spreading the word if, if uh, you know, a speed, an area is a, a, an area where they could get a ticket. They're pretty good at talking about that.
I agree with you, Christine. And so would this, uh, in terms of positioning the signs at the right place, would this be something that BPAC would come up as a recommendation or would it be Robert and team that would uh?
Well, I think that the, what I would propose is that if you per um, approve uh, or rec, say if you um,
Recommend.
Prove the installation of one of those curve signs along with that speed warning sign. We could work with Sergeant Metzger about figuring out where the best place to place it is.
So do, Robert, do you need to do a roll on this or with?
Yeah, so I think I have um, go ahead.
Can I, I'm just a, a comment question before we vote. Um, it looks like there's the double yellow line through the whole curve there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Which is surprising that people still don't, they don't stay on their side of the road. Cause that was one of the early comments. People don't even stay on their side of the road.
Oh, but that's Carol, that's because there's always dog walkers coming at them, so they have no choice but to swing over to avoid hitting the, the dog walkers, the pedestrians, the bicyclists. So they're kind of forced into making a decision, which means crossing the yellow. In fact, in fact, if they don't cross the yellow line, it's very dangerous for the pedestrians.
Well, they can stop. But anyway, just curious, I wanted to make sure I, I, because that's one of the things when they do all the studies, they say, oh, double, you know, double yellow lines and this and that makes people behave better. I was just curious. Thank you.
I don't know all the roads, but this Berry Lane has always seemed to be a very narrow road. And then the, the crossing there over the creek is obviously a pinch point. Just the amount of, I don't know, foliage and whatnot that creeps up, even in the image, Robert, you have on the screen, the rocks forward, you know, downrange on the road there, the little lamp next to the shrubbery on this one. I mean, it's, it just feels like a very narrow street. And I think to Sergeant Metzger's point, there, there isn't a good place to park the patrol car. And once you do, you take up what little space there is. So I mean, looking at this image, if there's a bicyclist and we, you go the three feet route, you're definitely in the oncoming lane. Um, someone walking a dog at the end of a leash and aid. But yeah, I think whatever we can do to slow, slow folks down on it, on what is otherwise a shortcut as I think quantity of traffic increases and we're getting into uh, new driver season, far back until this is good timing on a good idea.
So Robert, would you like to go ahead with the roll?
Uh, yeah, well, can I first get a motion?
I'll so move.
I think. Don't move. Propose a second.
All right, so Carol?
Yes.
Uh, Christine?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Jerome?
Yes.
All right, all good.
I guess now we move on to the staff reports.
Yes. I'm hoping I have the agenda shared.
You do.
Yes.
Sergeant Metzger, if you want to introduce this one?
Sure. Um, well, the traffic statistics for the last two months are included. Um, are there any, uh, any questions about the numbers uh, for the last couple of months? I, I will indicate that one of our traffic officers uh, was, well, was actually fortunate enough to become a daddy again. So he was out for last month, so we were down one traffic officer.
Congratulations to the officer.
I have a question about the pedestrian uh, car interaction on Green Oaks. I, um, it was at Oak Grove or was it like in front of 359 Green Oaks? Oh, I, I had a question about the uh, pedestrian um, that was hit by a car. Can you tell us more?
Yeah, that was a, that was a younger driver. Uh, I, I believe uh, but an adult, but, but probably near the age of eighteen. Uh, uh, a pedestrian was walking with some family members. I think there were four of them. And it was dark out. They were walking um, on the, well, Green Oaks goes in a circle. So they were walking from Frederick towards Oak Grove on what would be essentially the west side of the, the roadway. So they were walking facing traffic like they're supposed to. And uh, a, a car was traveling from Oak Grove towards Frederick. And they're not, they're not necessarily under the impression that he was going too fast. I think uh, he came around the corner and was surprised to see some of the pedestrians there and just made a poor decision and uh, and, and, and made a, made a turn that didn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense, but just, you know, an inexperienced driver. I think part of it was the, uh, one of the pedestrians was carrying a flashlight. And as cars go by, I've seen this myself. Pedestrians will, you know, kind of try to shine their flashlight at the drivers, but oftentimes they end up, you know, shining it in their eyes and uh, the driver of the vehicle stated that, you know, that the flashlight that one of the pedestrians was carrying, you know, was, you know, was in his eyes. So may have been a little bit of a contributing factor.
Yeah, well, thank you. That's, sorry to hear that.
Sergeant, uh, to that.
Very minor injuries.
Sergeant, to that point, I appreciate the effort that uh, your team has been making in terms of trying to educate pedestrians. But it's amazing that uh, even now there's a sizable portion of pedestrians that refuse to walk on the side facing traffic. They actually glare at you if you're walking on the side facing traffic. Like as though you're like, you, you know, doing the wrong thing. I don't know what else can be done about it, but uh, maybe more signs, I don't know. But anyways, we'll go on. Sorry, please.
Was there uh, any other questions about the, about the reports?
No.
One of the things to note is that recently we uh, moved one of our other motorcycle officers. Uh, we, we adjusted his schedule a little bit, so he's working um, every other Saturday. And he and I have been going out and doing bicycle uh, enforcement, uh, specifically at the intersection of Atherton Avenue and Alameda de Las Pulgas. So you'll see an increase in numbers of uh, bicycle stops for the next couple of months or so.
What are you seeing up there primarily? Running the stop sign?
It, it, that's, yeah, essentially running the stop sign is the, is the big one.
Yeah.
I'll go out there and sit, I'll go out there and sit out there on, on Saturdays. But when you get a group of, of, you know, eight or nine bicyclists that all go through the, the sign without stopping, it's hard to corral them all up together. So at least I'll have somebody out there with me to, we can uh, sort of make it some more stops.
They do that at the uh, lights of Middlefield and um, uh, Marsh, but it's not as common as uh, your area of Alameda de la Pulgas. But they just blow through the lights. Are they allowed to do that?
No, no, they, they have to follow the same rules of the roads uh, as motor vehicles.
The southbound bicyclists on uh, Middlefield at Marsh, they blow through the lights?
Well, there's, that's a T-intersection there. As long, as long as they're southbound on the, on the southbound shoulder, they, they, they could essentially go through there uninterrupted without any, you know, cause of, of any, you know, vehicles uh, having, you know, uh, any hazard of any, being struck by any vehicles.
I see. Okay, so that's legal for them?
Right, there's no, I don't believe there's a limit line for the bicycles. I think the bike lane uh, is uninterrupted in that area.
That is correct. The bike lane is uninterrupted. It's just that when, you know, people are making a left turn onto Middlefield, it could be a little dangerous, but I guess.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying completely.
Uh, if we've done the staff reports, uh, uh, do we have any member of the public for a public comment?
I don't see any members that would publicly.
And future agenda, do we have anything new right now? Otherwise, uh, can we uh, get a motion to adjourn? Carol, motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
I will motion to adjourn, have that.
Okay, second, Christine, thank you. I think everybody, meeting adjourned.
Everyone, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Thank you very much. Bye.